So to speak, so I will call to order the regular meeting of the township board for Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. Can I get another roll call vote for the record, Clerk Shepard?
Uh, Clerk Shepard?
Here.
Clerk Murray?
Here.
Clerk Ramon?
Here.
Clerk Aaron?
Here.
Clerk Harper? Here. All right, and we do need to do the Pledge of Allegiance because this is a legal formal meeting, so Director Programs, Katie Meyer, please give us the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will now move to public comment. Clerk Shepard will be calling anyone's name that signed up for public comment tonight. We do have three minutes per public comment, and if you could please speak a little louder, we want to make sure we are recording our meetings now, we want to make sure that it picks up okay on the microphone. So when Clerk Shepard calls you up, we'll begin that section.
First, Domenico Di Alessandro.
Good evening. My name is Domenico Di Alessandro, a retired landscape architect. I will address real estate value as it pertains to open space. Decades of research and nationwide surveys conducted by real estate agents and brokers without considering environmental benefits and focusing solely on home values consistently indicate the following: Quote, "The availability of green spaces is important to homeowners because it decreases stress levels, promotes exercise, and offers an area to relax and clear one's mind." Such health and environmental gains are being sought more and more by buyers. Open views, especially of natural spaces, are highly sought after by homebuyers. Studies show that homes with open views can command a premium, often increasing their market value by a noticeable percentage. While shrub owners can offer privacy and curb appeal, they also limit the view and can reduce the perceived value of a property. End quote. The restoration process usually takes a few years to reach maturity. The site may not look appealing at first. Time is needed to heal the damage caused by non-native invasive species, such as altering soil chemistry, reducing mycelium connectivity, and establishing a seed bank that requires swab walk treatments. The Daily Mail of London in the UK reports that an invasive plant, the Japanese knotweed, threatens to catastrophically devalue homes in areas of the United States where it can grow. Poor area is one of the places it does grow. The restoration work carried out by hundreds of volunteers, many are your neighbors, is helping to prevent the spread of this plant and other invasive species. Restoration efforts are enhancing the value of your homes. Residents bordering this open space have a unique privilege, as they can use some of Illinois's rarest ecosystems. Out of the original 36 million acres of prairies from 250 years ago, only 2,500 acres remain. Specifically, there are merely 148 acres of high-quality gravel hill prairie left in the state. This opportunity is comparable to having a daily private view of the Mona Lisa. I have to correct, it's not 146 acres, I'm sorry. I forgot, we lost Valvoline Prairie last year. So now it's only 125 acres of high-quality gravel hill prairie. I'll leave you with two questions tonight. Who among you is willing to purposely lower the market value of your home? And in the Dundee Township Board, is the Dundee Township Board purposely going to devalue the homes of its residents? Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Okay, next up.
Suzanne Macy?
Me.
Yes, Stacy.
Stacy, thank you.
So greetings, trustees, Supervisor Thoreau, staff, and guests. My name is Suzanne Macy. I'm an Algonquin neighbor and Dixie volunteer, botanist, retired from the Chicago Botanic Garden, and Vice President of the Illinois Native Plants Society. I am passionate about Dixie, and my passion and commitment are based on science. For 23 years now, I have studied Dixie's rare and other native plants and have learned how unique and truly valuable this nature preserve is. I study along with volunteers, and Carol has discovered a few of these, 11 rare and endangered plants at Dixie. A few of them are only known in Kane County from Dixie, and others are found only in one or two other Kane County preserves. But not only are these individual plants special, it's the entire prairie and woodland systems. Yes, we have oak, state prairies, and native shrubs that make this place unique. In Illinois, as you've probably read or heard, less than one-tenth of 1% of our original prairie still remained in the 1970s when IDNR conducted a statewide land survey. And since then, more prairies have been created, for sure. But there's absolutely no substitute for the original, almost 10,000-year-old fire-dependent prairie that evolved over millennia with this unique suite of plants, animals, insects, birds, and other organisms. And the dry gravel hill prairie at Dixie is even more rare. Fewer than 50 acres remained at the time of the '70s survey, and they are only found in northern and particularly northeastern Illinois, our home. End quote. Once the gravel hills are lost, there is little chance of restoring a gravel prairie. This is from Chicago Wilderness. Dixie's hill prairies were discovered only in 1997, when the township purchased the property. What a find, what a gem! Because of its rarity, the township has taken on the task of first dedicating and protecting Dixie as an Illinois nature preserve, and then restoring all of it to its full natural identity. So that is why we are reclaiming the prairie from the invasive shrubs. This is the township's gift to nature and to its citizens, for which I am personally grateful. I feel so fortunate to be able to do my research in this special site. For me to stand on the gravel hill we call Big Hill is to feel grounded in an authentic, ancient place of incredible natural beauty. Thank you, and come visit.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, June Keebler.
You've heard a lot about the rarity of our prairies, 21 billion to less than 1%. In fact, it's .01% of the prairies remain by 1976. So it is a very, really rare thing. And I'd like to also say, first of all, that Dundee is very fortunate to have a fantastic group of dedicated volunteers that work hard at every workday restoring our native plant communities. The work that the contractor performed at Dixie Brigs with his forestry mower would have taken staff and volunteers several months to accomplish. Secondly, I'd like to assure everyone in this room that the vegetation removed by this contractor in no way resembled a native woodland or a forest. It consisted of common and smooth buckthorn, Russian and autumn olive, Oriental bittersweet, multi-flower rose, and a few species of Eurasian honeysuckle. Every one of these species is considered an exotic weed and is listed on the state exotic weed list and is illegal to sell in Illinois. They each do their individual and collective damage to our Illinois' native prairies, woodlands, and wetlands. You will hear or have heard about several of these invasive plants tonight. Illinois nicknamed the Prairie State, of course you've heard this. Prairie covered about two-thirds of our state, woodlands and wetlands, the remaining part. Folks dominated our woodlands, wetlands were often part of our prairies and our woodlands, and also made up their own plant communities. So you know, by 1967, the prairie had been reduced to 2,300 acres. Woodlands are diminishing from the lack of fire and other natural disasters. Woodlands need our full sunlight so that they can reproduce their own oak species, but also everything else that's part of our woodlands, the native wildflowers and the other shrubs and other trees. So now, instead, our oak woodlands are being filled up with invasive species that prevent oaks and wildflowers from regenerating. Over 90% of our wetlands in Illinois have been drained, channeled, or plowed over and plowed over. So Dundee Township and its citizens should be extremely proud that our township is restoring and/or putting our Illinois native plant communities back into and making a part of our community. I would also like to tell you about one of these exotic species and the damage it causes, Oriental bittersweet, of which I have an example right there. Oriental bittersweet. Illinois has a beautiful native bittersweet, but its niche has been taken over and usurped by the invasive variety. The invasive's favorite community to grow in is our woodlands.
Want to pass around?
It has the potential, and often does, form a carpet across our woodland floor. But its most key work is to send its young vines up and around the tree. It twirls around the trunk of the trees and strangles them to death. In one of our local woodlands, this monster plant has branched and set up at least 30 vines around a beautiful 200-plus-year-old oak, white oak, growing up into the canopy, wrapping around its branches, and burned rapidly and heavily until the entire canopy of this oak is covered with this vine, and the poor oak burdened by the vine's enormous weight, while the vine also strangles the trunks of the limbs.
But thank you.
You have one or something?
Yes, well, I'm just going to say, this vine.
Thank you so much.
Is that your sholto?
Yes. This particular bittersweet strangled a large old hickory.
Jared, can you put us a second?
This particularly strangled a hickory in Breezewood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Hello, everybody, I'm Carol Oneur. I have been, well, first of all, in the Dixie steward, have been the Dixie steward for about seven years. But I've lived, when I built my house, it backed up to Dixie Brigs Farm Farm, which is now Dixie Brigs Nature Preserve, 41 years ago. And I remember when the township purchased the property back in 1998, they put up the signs saying, giving the property barrier, and they also passed out a flyer telling everybody that they would be cutting down brush in Dixie Brigs. Well, of course, I was young, I was raising a family, and I got scared because I had a 30-foot barrier of brush. It was green, I thought it was good. 30 foot of privacy between me and the public would be walking out in the nature preserve. But as time went by, the township never cut it down, it stayed. So finally, I started to educate myself, and I found out that everything that I had in that barrier was actually bad. It was invaders from other countries, it didn't belong here. So about 10 years ago, I ended up cutting it all down, not the township, I removed every bit of it. And now I have a beautiful view of the prairie. I can see the deer, the fox, the coyote. At night, I see the owl swoop down for his dinner, looking for the mice or the voles that are out in the field. And in the morning, I hear the songbird singing their song, so happy. All of that wouldn't be possible if we didn't have a prairie and an open area to enjoy it in. So I just wanted to say thank you to the township for taking good care of all the open space properties.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Next, Bob Sutton.
I have to bring my notes. Who's not going to stand? I'm Bob Sutton, I am a tree hugger. I like nature and I do have notes because I can't bring them for everything I want to say. But, you know, Illinois Prairie State, we heard that already, just a few years ago, a few short years ago, we had less than seven-tenths of 1% of prairie left in the state. As you earlier, it's now down to one-tenth of 1%. It's a real travesty. The native prairie, Dixie Brigs is part of that that still remains. The Tallgrass Prairie is one of our most endangered ecosystems in the world today. Our high-value prairie has been encroached upon by honeysuckle and European buckthorn in the last 40 years. This non-invasive species is detrimental to our ecosystem. Buckthorn outcompetes native trees, now comprising 40% of the Illinois canopy. It's only about 7% of the Illinois population, but this is why, this 40% of the canopy, you cut it down and it grows back even more aggressively. And you just can't keep cutting. You can't keep up with it unless you keep cutting all the time. Buckthorn poisons the soil with the molten. It's a toxin which gets into the watershed, it kills amphibian embryos. Its berries are eaten by birds, that causes a laxative effect to the birds. That means they spread the seeds with that laxative effect, and eventually the birds die from dehydration. It's not a good thing. Buckthorn also changes soil cuss characteristics, rendering it inhospitable to other plant life. Its foliage creates dense shade, so native wildflowers, grasses, and shrubs are unable to survive. Also, it leafs out early, buckthorn again releases a molten when it does that, and it negatively impacts the spring ephemeral, ephemerals, easy for me to say. When we bought our lot to build a home in Gaslight West 42 years ago, the western moraine, as we called it affectionately, the west bank, the western moraine had very few trees on it, and no homes, by the way. 42 years later, the moraine has large tracts of land covered by buckthorn and honeysuckle and other invasive species. Our concern 42 years ago was that the property adjoining our lot would one day be a strip mall, a factory, or even worse. What we received was a nature preserve with a high-value prairie and an oak savanna. The Tallgrass Prairie serves an essential role in filtering rainwater, replenishing the aquifer, and preventing soil erosion and flooding. Consequently, it enhances the value of all surrounding properties. My friend, he makes noise.
Reckoning it here.
We're grateful that Dixie Brigs did not let the land develop, that her heirs honored her wish by selling it to Dundee Township for open space, and also thankful for Dundee Township Open Spaces for maintaining and restoring our incredible resource. I'd also like the current restoration done by Dundee Township, and for that matter, the village of Algonquin, serves as an example of ecological stewardship for all other towns and villages in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, George Johnson.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm George Johnson, I think I know most of you, but for the record, I am a neighbor to the open space at Dixie Brigs Farm on the far east end. My three minutes tonight, I would like to address directly an apparent controversy that I have heard about at the project at the northwest corner of Dixie, near the neighborhood of Lundale and Hampton Corner. If it's not a controversy, I hope I'll start one. The project is aimed at eradicating invasive brush like buckthorn and honeysuckle, we've heard quite a bit about that already. But this is by far the biggest and worst invasive situation anywhere on the property. The aggressive, non-native brush there is ugly, it's hideous, and it's metastasized like cancer. It's gotta go. The main homeowner concern that I've heard about seems to be loss of backyard privacy. I'd like to share some thoughts on this to address this worry from several perspectives. Rose and I have shared a border with Dixie for over 50 years, so we've had Carol and everybody else be there. We were there on gaslight terrace with still a cow pasture. Our border is completely open for 704 feet. Three walking trails, public trails, come right up to our prairie. We don't see that as objectionable at all. We've had zero problems over the years with the open border, no gawkers, no looky-loos, no intruders. We love our open view looking west, the sunsets can be spectacular, we love to watch the deer on the prairie in the evening. From another point of view, I'm also a co-steward at Dixie with an environmental bias. I absolutely want the invasive brush, like that neighborhood that I mentioned, gone. It chokes the life out of any other native vegetation that tries to grow there. Their perspective is the Friends of Dundee Natural Areas, it's called FDNA for short. FDNA, which I belong to, gifted $10,000 to Dundee Township for the startup of this clearing project. Obviously, FDNA strongly supports continuing this project. However, in the haste to do a good job for nature, the township and FDNA may have overlooked another kind of nature, which is human nature. It's human nature to get shook up about sudden change. Uncertainty creates anxiety. We know about that in politics. Not knowing what comes next, people imagine the very worst case. Where I'm going from this, if I can turn the page, is that the township I see now needing to take time to explain the project to homeowners. Starting now, I suggest concerted effort to reassure the neighbors by communicating the details of the plan. For instance, the machine work and clearing is over for this year, no more. The $10,000 is spent. FDNA hopes to fund more clearing in 2026. The final phase of the clearing will not approach any backyards until 2027. The significance of this is that I think homeowners in that area can breathe easier. There will be a two-year intermission to work together to make the project compatible with everybody, and I hope we can do that. I think we can. How can this project be made to satisfy everybody's needs? I don't think it takes a lot of imagination to envision options where the clearing continues, but it's a win-win for everybody.
George? George?
Got two more sentences.
Okay, thank you.
I think it can be a win-win, no specifics, I can't speak for the township, but there's no question in my mind that we can make good things happen for everybody and still do this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, George.
Next. Steve Keebler. Steve Keebler, sorry.
Hi, everybody, Steve Keebler, volunteer with various open space parcels. I'd like to add a few words about honeysuckle, in case you haven't heard enough about it. The honeysuckle removal at Dixie Brigs, to be specific, it's important to note, nearly all the honeysuckle in Kane County and the Chicago region is non-native. There is a native species of honeysuckle that grows in Kane County, but it hasn't been found in Dixie. Refer to Dick Young's book, Wild Plants of Kane County, here is Dick's description of invasive honeysuckle. "A choking vigorous plant that severely damages many fine woodlands." And in the same book, Dick goes on to quote two other local authors, you may have heard of Floyd Swink, Jerry Wilhamp. They say, "It would be difficult to exaggerate the vicious and pernicious weed potential of this shrub." So honeysuckle is a major target, not only of the township's restoration staff and volunteers, but also forest preserve and DNR staff and volunteers. Here's some reasons why, based on scientific studies. Removal of Japanese honeysuckle reduces mosquito species that commonly feed on human hosts. There's no areas invaded with honeysuckle support, local microclimates favorable to mosquito survival. Invasive honeysuckle increases the risk of tick-borne diseases by creating dense habitat where ticks thrive. Invasive honeysuckle species release chemicals through their roots and the decomposition of their leaves that inhibit growth of other plants in their vicinity. This contributes to the displacement and elimination of native plant species. For the benefit of people's health and the health of our surrounding ecosystems, these are a few of the reasons our township, open space staff, and volunteers are doing their best to eliminate invasive honeysuckle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Keebler.
Next is James Carey.
James Carey, thank you for the opportunity to speak, appreciate it. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to everybody that's done all the work in Dixie Brigs, it's absolutely beautiful and fantastic to walk back there. I'm going to go a bit against what most people come here to say. I am all for removing the invasive species, and I completely understand and respect the project that's going there. The pictures and seeing the growth of what's happened back there is extremely important, and it's beautiful to see that growth. I am concerned about the removal of the trees. I do know that we have lost many, many of our prairies, but I do not feel it a grand idea to remove the trees, as that is also a dwindling resource in Illinois. I respect the fact that everything that is invasive needs to be removed and the effect that it has on the land, and I am for that, I support that. I find, though, that the trees also support many additional parts to the ecosystem back there, to the plants, to the animals that have found home there. As well, as you walk through the Dixie Brigs, those trees provide an immersion level. You feel more connected to the land that you're there, and you don't have to look at anything that might remove you from the majesty that you're there. It provides a sound barrier, a wind barrier, so there's a definite advantage to having that. Now, at the thickest point in that northwest corner is about 500 feet of forest, or trees, or whatever specific terminology. I know that the wheels are already moving, and there are specific plans in motion to remove that, and it's very hard to get in there and remove the invasive species with some of the trees. So I would propose a compromise, as there has been talk of potentially just 30 feet. I think where possible, 100 feet would be much more amenable to everyone and much more manageable. I think that would still provide the privacy that homeowners crave, the housing for the animals, and a barrier between those enjoying the Dixie Brigs and those on the opposite side, as well as allowing an advantage to get into the invasive species. That is my proposal, and I hope that everyone would consider that. So again, thank you, and I look forward to seeing the continued growth of Dixie Brigs and getting our prairie lands back. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm gonna change the topic. I've been curious for some time about why the Dundee Township Board spends so much time in executive session discussing litigation. And my calculation is spent between nine hours and thirteen hours discussing litigation since August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. I can't give you a precise figure because three of those sessions included personnel matters, and three of those sessions, no reason at all was given for why you went into executive session. So I went on a quest for the court case, not an easy task, but eventually found it and read over seven hundred pages of court filings. Thanks for an interesting story. If you have any doubt where I got the court records, I have the receipt for it. But any case, I also read the relevant information contained in the East Dundee packet for the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two board meeting. The only conclusion I can reasonably reach is that all the court activity and legal fees were completely unnecessary and due to decisions made by Supervisor Thrower and three of the four Dundee Township trustees. Furthermore, what's going on here is a perfect example of a lack of transparency on the part of Supervisor Thrower. The lawsuit has a single cause, interference in a real estate transaction between East Dundee and the Dundee Township Foundation that Supervisor Thrower and the enabling Dundee Township trustees pursued since November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. I was gonna give a Cliff Notes version of all the interference, but that would take too long, because Supervisor Thrower kept pursuing roadblocks, one after another, as they failed to stop the real estate transaction. It also appears that Supervisor Thrower has a conflict of interest and has not been transparent about it. Supervisor Thrower put in a separate bid for some of the space that East Dundee had put up for sale, and her bid was ranked last out of the six bids submitted. The township also put in a bid for the space that it was currently leasing from East Dundee at the time, and that bid was ranked fourth. Thirteen days after the East Dundee and Dundee Township Foundation signed a purchase agreement, Supervisor Thrower filed a lien claiming that East Dundee owed the homeowners association here a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, thus freezing the transfer of the property. At the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three township meeting, Supervisor Thrower stated that the township's attorney met with East Dundee and was, quote, "working through the bad dues," unquote. This was the last mention in any public meeting, even after the dispute with East Dundee was resolved. So in the interest of transparency, here's some of the questions I have for Supervisor Thrower. Why did you bring up the issue of past dues when East Dundee put out the, why did you not bring up the issue of past dues when East Dundee put out the RFP for space, some of which you personally bid on? Why did you and another owner here in the condominium and in this building, who already owned space in the building and whose bid overlapped with the space you desired, bring up the issue of past dues? Why were you and this other owner unaware of the fire code violations in the common areas prior to the issuing of the RFP? And why did the condominium association with Supervisor Thrower as president assert a right of first refusal nearly two years after filing the lien? Seems this would have been the first thing to do.
Time.
So you're not interested, you know, you're not representing the best interests of the township, and I know you're gonna spin this by saying you received seventy thousand dollars as part of the hundred and eighty thousand dollar settlement with the homeowners association, but that's not what's really going on here. And so you should have recused yourself from the very beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to say, I know we don't usually respond during public comment, but it's obviously political season. Just so the audience and the record and minutes reflect that the township is part of an association. Unfortunately, we don't own this whole building. We pay dues. We're part of a, like a homeowners association essentially, and we were sued. Bottom line. So if anybody has any questions, please come and see me. I'd love to tell the whole story, but we will move on with the meeting. So next.
Hello, my name is Rosalie Johnson, and I have lived next to Dixie for almost fifty, sixty years. My property is bordered on two sides by native prairie. When I first moved in, the land was farmed. There, some of it was in crops and some of it was pastures that was grazed by cows and horses who eat and everything, and they kept the non-native species in check. The only woods were, as they are now, along the creeks. They were true woods. There were oaks, hickories, maples, and other native, other native species. The only brush was native understory, like the shrubs. Then for about ten, fifteen years after farming ended, the land was left untended. And this period saw the encroachment of the invasives. Honeysuckle, buckthorn, and bittersweet began to displace native plants, crowding out young trees, and some birds that I had always seen were no longer there. They couldn't nest there. When the township bought the property, it was a tangle of unmanageable, aggressive growth of invasives. The township began a long, slow process of clearing out the encroaching invasives with the goal of restoring the land to its natural state, little by little. The individual projects in progress over the years and in progress now are a very necessary part of a much larger, long-term effort to control and possibly eradicate the continuous threat that the invasive species represent. Once they take hold, they spread, and they keep spreading, and they spread some more, and they won't go away by themselves. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Henry Fixmer, and this is gonna be fairly redundant, but I'll go ahead and speak it since I wrote beforehand. I don't represent the Open Space Program, but I decided to speak as someone who enjoys nature hiking and has learned a little about forestry and plains from friends up at my church and recently volunteers from the Open Space Program. When I went out to volunteer, the steward at Solmander Springs showed me how young native oak trees have been crowded by highly invasive honeysuckle and buckthorn, and at Library Springs, it was those plus red cedar. I hadn't made it to Raceway Woods Work Day yet, or Dixie Briggs, or some of the others, but schedule-willing, I will. So from a neighbor's or homeowner's point of view, I hear the concerns about privacy and everything, and I can understand how that might be upsetting without the, let's see, and it's perfectly reasonable to have a strong reaction to having that close up to your house. The thing about conservation is that it's not always pretty. It can be downright destructive, but the outcome will be worth it. Native trees will have the light and soil they need once the crowding is gone. Native plants can reappear and literally blossom all over the place. With honeysuckle gone, the deer tick populate, the deer tick population drops by around forty percent, I understand, and when the toxic buckthorns are removed, they'll be safer for amphibians and birds. So you remember grade school lessons about the food chain. Restoration of our natural spaces helps heal some of the damage caused by human behaviors. Another concern I think I've heard about trail system is trail systems close to property lines, especially considering dog walkers maybe lead, fend their dogs off the leashes, but the rule enforcement is not on our, on the topic tonight, I guess. But trails, they go through, they're a part of public nature preserves. There's no guarantees that trails won't be added or closed when buying a property that orders an open space, county forest preserve, state or national park systems. They're taking their chances that things may change. When we bought our house, there were several empty lots behind it, and I loved the view until a developer broke ground and built a house that completely blocks that view. So, and we're, yeah, so I don't like it, but that was a possibility when we moved in. No matter where we choose to live, there'll be risks and rewards, and I invite the homeowners who may be upset by the changes in the open spaces to attend to workdays and learn more about what the volunteers are doing and why. The volunteers are patient, kind, and knowledgeable, and a great, it's a great family activity. Thank you.
Thank you. And Leslie Markavolar.
Good evening, Madam Supervisor, trustees, and members of the audience. I'm Mark Avilar. I'm from Algonquin, Illinois, and it really touches the heart to see what's dropping a stone in a pool and the ripples that go out. And I use that metaphor because that's how Dixie Briggs Fromm became an open space property for Dundee Township. And some of all y'all might remember, I know Trustee Harney, I think you'll remember, when the Open Space Referendum passed in nineteen ninety-six and the open space plan had been published, Dixie Briggs Fromm was not on that list. It was not there. For whatever reason, I mean, the referendum passed, it was a very close book, but it did pass, and around twenty-eight and a half, a little less than twenty-eight years ago now, I talked to many of my neighbors, because I'm looking at the list of property, you know. I remember Raceway Woods was a marquee property, but where were those, my neighbors and myself who lived in the Algonquin area? And we're gonna be paying for the bonds over a twenty-year period. Well, what can we get for this, for our own enjoyment and for the enjoyment of our township? That's how Dixie Briggs Fromm came about. I remember talking to neighbors in early nineteen ninety-seven, especially on Gaslight South overlooking the ravine. I remember working with neighbors on Naughty Hill Road, and I remember the night that we came, or in late ninety-seven, early ninety-eight, it's the blur at that point, when we convinced the then township board to add Dixie Briggs Fromm for a purchase. And then later in nineteen ninety-eight, yes, there was a litigation spat in between, I remember, between the Village of Algonquin and Dundee Township, and I was serving as a trustee for Village of Algonquin back then, and I know what that's about, but that was resolved. And we listen to what's going on tonight. What has happened over the intervening years is that this is just one property, and there are similar stories. I mean, I see Carol up there on, I do my hikes at Dixie Briggs Fromm more often than not. I've seen the volunteers working diligently, and yes, just like understanding the phrase fighting fire with fire, you have to take out the invasive species. And certainly, the homes along Longdale Drive, Kensington Drive, for Willoughby Farms, right around the East Moore Trailhead, and then going against Gaslight West, where you have these invasive species around the Hampton Court and Spring Hill area. But Mr. Kearing, I believe lives in Algonquin, he brought up something and addressed the public comment, just as I did way back when, to say, let's add this. And Mr. Kearing brings off a good view, a different perspective, and I'm sure the township will listen to it. So I wish the township will, and thank you for letting me go down memory lane.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Was there anybody else that didn't get a chance to sign up that wants to do public comment? Okay, I'm gonna move to reports then, and I'm gonna start, actually, a little unorthodox, but I'll start with my trustees, in case there's anything, you know, before our residents and guests may leave. So any public comment or response?
I don't hear any.
Okay. Trustee Harney?
Just one. I wanna respond to Mark. That Dixie was left off the list acquisitions for the referendum at the request of the people of the family. We contacted the family at the time, and Dixie was dying, and it was a very bad time, and they asked us just to leave them alone, which we did. And so I commend Mark and people in Algonquin for sort of working around that situation and, yes, because that is probably one of the finest parcels that we own.
Okay, thank you. All right. Trustee Romano? Okay. Trustee Aaron?
No report, but I'd like to thank all the people for being here, and I'd like to see you come just for a regular meeting instead of just for, you know, something to complain about.
It's usually not this exciting, right? So, yes, definitely thank you to all the residents that came out to speak and to share concerns, and for those that have written emails, and we definitely are here to work with the residents and to do great restoration work, and so it's such an important balance, and we take it very seriously.
I have somebody pictured here.
Oh, yeah. I think that's, that may be June's. So again, thank you all for coming. We did have one public comment on executive session, and obviously, we can't comment on anything that's pending litigation. We can't comment on personnel matters, but I can say that the lawsuit that Mr. Setz researched did have to do with unpaid assessments by East Dundee. It would take me quite a while to go into the history of this building. Like I said, we're an owner, East Dundee was an owner. There's a couple of private owners, and so when you sell a building, those assessments have to be paid. So that's really what it was about. In the mix of all that, the township, as I said, we were sued, we were brought into the lawsuit as kind of a third party. I'm not sure if that's proper, but again, it was based on those efforts to collect the unpaid assessments. Those efforts have been ongoing since my election. I think a few weeks into it, I went to East Dundee and said, you know, before they were gonna sell, you need to pay these dues, and we have expenses here, right? We have insurance. We gotta keep the lights on, the bathrooms, common areas, that sort of thing. So it was ongoing since early on in my term. I inherited, lucky me, the role of the condo board president. That's something that the township supervisor gets to do, unfortunately. And we also, I inherited a building that was in poor condition, not to the fault of this board or even prior township boards, just by the nature of how it was developed. And it was, it was, it's, I won't take you on a tour there, but I've got pictures. It's gonna get better. That's the good news. But it was in poor condition, and there were no reserves, right? So normally, condo has a roof reserve, window, parking lot, that sort of thing, no reserve. So it was a bad situation, but I'm pleased to say the case has been settled. The township was reimbursed for all of our legal fees, and then we actually obtained a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the condo board. So now we have reserves. So it's a very positive outcome. At the final hour, there is a private foundation that is a new owner, and they have some additional claims against the association and against the village, of course, because that's who they bought from. So that's ongoing, but we're hopeful that those will be dismissed because we're all working together. So again, a messy building, a messy situation, which sometimes happens, but I'm happy to say that myself and the board, we've cleaned that up and are in good shape. So hopefully that addresses any concerns. So we'll now move on. We'll go to reports with our Kane County Board, Chris Kias or Jared Sanchez, who wants to take it. And again, if anybody that gave public comment doesn't wanna stay, I totally understand, and you're free to leave if you want, but you can stay with us if you'd like. So thank you. No, it's gonna be fine.
Yeah. Madam Supervisor and trustees, thanks for letting me speak. Chris Kias, District Twenty-Three, which is Algonquin and Carpenterville, and right up next to In-Including.
Dixie Briggs.
Very exciting. And it's great to see all you guys that are doing all that wonderful work out there. I think that's what makes our part of Kane County very exciting, is that the open space that both you guys have created and take care of, and that the forest preserve, just having been the recent past president of the forest preserve, are twenty-three thousand acres throughout the county, including Raceway Woods and some others that, very exciting to see you guys, and all the volunteers we have, hundreds of volunteers working with the county and our forest preserves on the twenty-three thousand acres. Put that together and keep that, those natural areas. I think they're absolutely an asset to our lives here. Having the access to that, as mentioned earlier, very good for our health and also good for, not bad, it's good for our law. It's good. It's good for housing, good housing, good safe housing that has access to green areas is definitely more valuable. Unfortunately, our deputy just left here. I was gonna thank him as well, Santiago. He's been working very closely with us. He's been working very closely with us. I am on a committee that handles the code violations in unincorporated areas where some of you live in. And Officer Santiago has been very diligent about working with us at, in, next to Carpentersville and some of the other areas about cleaning up some of those problems and code violations. So, thanks to him, I guess we'll thank him later as well. Onto other King County business. I don't know if you recently heard that the King County Cougars, this is a complete switch around. The King County Cougars baseball team's been sold to Rev Entertainment. So, the company that is operating the baseball team is going to change completely. It has been sold, so it's moved over to Rev. Rev is affiliated with a number of major league teams, including the Texas Rangers, multimillion dollar, Rev is a multimillion dollar company. So we're excited that we'll have a seamless transition into those of you who enjoy baseball, between when you're out hiking in the woods and Dixie Briggs, to enjoy the franchise and the baseball team down there. Then on to reminder, remind you all, I'm sure you're kind of aware of it, this election day is April 1st.
Oh, yes.
And as a representative of King County, I'd like to remind the King County Board that they can get a sample ballot at kingvotes.org, that's our clerk's office. And invite you to read all the way through the ballot, because there is a measure on the end of the ballot about tax reference for safety in King County. You can find more information about that at kingsafe.org. And I would encourage you to also do some research and find out how it will affect you. It's a small tax of .75% on a hundred dollars, or on, .75%, which is
Seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents on a hundred dollars.
Yeah, three quarters.
Right. And I encourage you, actually, and I know there's some literature out there that represents this in various ways and some figures that have been presented. So I took my taxes to see what, because we had a question, you had a question about the raising taxes
Right.
In King County, whether King County's been, and King County Board was responsible for doing that or handling the money. And I was able to put my taxes, this is just my perspective on it, in King County, my taxes from 2014 to 2023. And I split them out and added them up and compared them to the amount of, the taxes have gone up. All of the taxing bodies, except for King County, which went up 18%, they all went up well over 30%, some over 30%, including the Dundee Township went up 36% over that 10-year period. The only other thing that went down was the King Forest Preserve, which retired one of the big ones, which made it drop 16%. And King County only went up 18% during that same period. So, almost half of what the rest of the county went on. So, I encourage you to, actually, go, Mr. Belec will help you find, how to find out what your taxes are, you can go back as far as you need to and compare just exactly how things have increased. You'll find that the cost of living has increased 32% and all other taxing bodies in King County have been able to keep that. But unfortunately, the King County Board had decided at that time that they wouldn't do that.
Yeah. Great.
Sorry, that was my fluke.
Oh, that's good. Informative.
You have two more town halls, one in Aurora at the church tomorrow and then one next Tuesday in Sugar Grove with the like.
Yeah, unfortunately, we've had our town halls up here, I think we're getting better at explaining them. I ended up being really bad about explaining this, but unfortunately, they're going to be in the south part of the county. Which is
And there's information on the website, so
Right, at kingsafe.org, you'll find some information.
Perfect.
And find out, as much information as possible. Go to the end of the ballot, make sure you vote for everything.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you guys do, and I know it's a chore to come in and do this every month. It's a job, it's, I get it.
Thank you, thanks, Chris.
And thank you again.
All right, thank you. Highway Commissioner Schultz, any report if you would come to the podium? Thank you.
Oh, yes.
We really don't have anything to add to my written report, but with election season in full swing, I'd like to remind everybody that it is illegal to put campaign signs in the right of way on private property. I've been getting a lot of calls about it. And I, normally I won't touch them, I'll stay, pose a hazard or something like that. But I know a lot of municipalities will remove them, including the state. And I just wanted to remind you guys that.
Okay, thank you. We got a reminder for this building from the village, so, yes, all the municipalities are
Is it 10 feet or is it more?
Well, actually, I did not know this and, because for years we've been doing it, but the right of way for this, it comes right to the building, it's north of the sidewalk. I thought it was that parkway, but it's not. So, we got a note. It's all right, so thank you, thank you, Highway Commissioner. Our assessor is downstate with some of his staff training, but he said that the seniors are coming in, it's senior freeze time, so if you have neighbors that have done that, that's a big tax benefit for senior freeze and they'll help fill the paperwork out for that. Now we'll move on to the mental health board report.
Good evening. You have a copy of this report in front of you, but I'll just cover the highlights. We received our first invoice from this grant year from Family Service Association of Greater Elgin, our biggest provider. And so, we're going to start to see some of the other ones coming in as they're on quarterly invoicing schedules. So we'll see some more of those in April and May. At the last meeting, the board expressed an interest in pursuing a second round of grant funding for this year. Amount of up $200,000 for three categories, teen mental health services, adults with disabilities, and homelessness. So we're preparing a notice of funding opportunity for that, that would be approved at the next meeting. And our annual report, you have a copy of, that was approved at our last meeting as well, so you have the final version in front of you. That will be posted online as well for the public to take a look at and see what's been going on in the past year with the mental health court. And then one more thing, I was on a call the other day with our legislative group and there is a bill in Springfield covering the dissolution of townships and potentially giving counties the option to put that in the referendum. As of right now, it's not dead, it's not really going anywhere, there's some discussions taking place about it, but one of the holdups is if the townships are dissolved, what happens to the township level mental health boards? So that seems to be the issue of contention right now, that's slowing that bill down. I know there are some local legislators that are in opposition to it. No telling right now if it's going to move forward anytime soon. Like I said, it's not dead, but it's just, it's not going anywhere. So there's still some talks in, will they change the language? They're not sure yet. But just wanted to let you know that's somewhat relevant to both the township and the mental health court. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Thank you, thank you. Director Meyer, if you'd take the podium to do Assistance Department first?
Well, I did want to mention that we just moved from one old fiscal year to a new fiscal year. So the last few weeks with the bills, I'm making sure that they're going to the correct fiscal year and I think we've gone through that now. So now it's time for me to take the old files, put them in the bag, make new files, all that fun stuff. For our social service programs, I'm going to start with riding cane. So for the year 2024, our riders took 5,100 trips. That's a lot of trips. Dundee Township is the, has the third highest amount of riders and trips in King County. The number one is, number one highest is Aurora, followed by the city of Elgin. So, we have a lot of riders in this program, just making that clear. I just went to the quarterly parent transit council meeting and they nominated me again for council vice chair. We've had no emergency assistance clients or general assistance clients since the last time we met. And Friends of Dundee Natural Areas has two Earth Month events planned for April. On April 12th, Valerie Blaine, who's a retired naturalist from King County Forest Preserves, will be leading an exciting hike at Salamander Springs. It's a nighttime hike at 7:00 PM and it's the sounds of night. And it's going to focus on frogs, which we have a lot of there. So that's going to be pretty cool. And then our own Sue Harney will be leading a workday at Salamander Springs on April 26th.
That may, that may change because we have people who can't get, we're working that out.
Valerie Blaine?
Yeah. Sorry, stand by. To be announced.
On the calendar.
Okay.
And it was 15 years ago when June and Steve Keebler took me on my first tour of Dixie Briggs. And it blows my mind how much it has changed in 15 years. And I just want to thank you and I can't believe that I'm here today. I remember that day you took me there, I didn't think I would be here helping to protect open space and manage it. So thank you for planting that seed in my heart. I do wear my heart on my sleeve. I am wearing my butterfly dress.
Thank you, Director Meyer. All right, our foreman for open space has provided the monthly report. Spring burn season has begun, so you'll see that, the forest preserve does that, I think the Park District as well, so you'll see signs for that. And that will, the report will be on our website. Clerk Shepherd, any report tonight? Okay, and Attorney Kim Z, any report?
Not at this time.
Okay, very good. Did I miss anybody for reports? I know there's a lot of people out there, I think we're good. Okay, very good. We'll now move on to the approval of the February 19th, 2025 Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes. Can I get a motion in a second for approval? A motion by Trustee Romano in a second, please. Second by Trustee Aaron's. We had a few edits, we've given those to the clerk. Did anybody have any other edits they'd like to submit? All right, if not, all in favor for approval, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. We now need a motion in a second to approve the treasures report, so we'll be looking at fiscal year 2025 in its entirety. So a motion in a second and then we'll discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Trustee Schaefer, a second by Trustee Harney, and if our accountant, Tom, can come up and go over our financial statements? Again, this is looking at the last 12 months, closing out our fiscal year 2025.
All right. So I'll be focusing on this page, the summary page I don't really go off of. So, for the fiscal year 25, township wound up finishing with a surplus just over $1 million, $1,601,480. On the revenue side, selected 4.3 million. It is 91% of the total budgeted revenues, if we back out that $300,000 grant from the state for the cemetery fence, that brings us almost to 97% of revenue. So, very good year in terms of interest, waiver budget, tax dollars came in as expected. All the other categories performed pretty well. On the expense side, total operating expenses, about 3.2 million, that's 70% of the budget. Point out a couple of, look at a couple of our funds, the town itself was at 96% of budgeted expenses, they're right on, right on the mark. GA was only at 49%, we know that's kind of just as
It's hard to project that.
We wanted to have the money on hand, we needed, but that came in lower than expected. Cemetery was only at 64%, once again, that's from that fence expense. If we back that out, that one is also 96%, so running budget. Road and Bridge, we're only at 70%. We know that was from engineering and infrastructure projects that didn't occur during the year, large projects that the Road District is saving for. Mental health, we're at 31%, same as GA. We want to have the funds available, the grant expenses for the year came in lower than we expected. And then capital, we're at 42%, once again, that's from the fence, that cemetery fence that didn't get, didn't get that grant paid off this year. So all in all, that $1 million surplus wasn't intentional. Like I said, saving for the road bridge projects, working with the mental health board to hopefully increase those grants, expenses in the future. Should bring that surplus down to more manageable level. As of kind of flesh time and for next year's budget, we're looking to shift some of those excess funds to capital, do some strategic planning. So, we're going to keep an eye on all funds and manage and monitor all those as we go forward. But overall, township finished the year within any fund balance of $5,115,758. A very good year.
Very good.
If we flip two pages, I'll take a look at every bank accounts there. We're totaling $5,124,713, which ties nicely with that fund balance.
Okay, any questions for Tom? Any questions? Okay, very good. Roll call, vote to approve the treasures report, please.
Trustee Schaefer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Trustee Romano?
Yes.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Supervisor Pearl?
Yes, thank you. A motion in a second to approve the bills from the past month.
So moved.
A motion by Trustee Harney in a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Schaefer, any questions on the bills? All right, roll call, vote, please, Clerk Shepherd.
Trustee Schaefer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Trustee Romano?
Yes.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Supervisor Pearl?
Yes, thank you. We'll now move to old business. I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the Dundee Township fiscal year 2026 Budget and Appropriation Ordinance 2025-01. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
A motion by Trustee Schaefer in a second?
Sorry.
Second by Trustee Aaron's, any discussion? Again, this is what we've been talking about the last several months, no major changes. Again, doing some strategic moving of our fund balance into capital for specific projects. Okay, roll call, vote then, please.
Trustee Schaefer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Trustee Romano?
Yes.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Supervisor Pearl?
Yes. A motion in a second, please, to approve the Dundee Township Road District fiscal year 2026 Budget and Appropriation Ordinance 2025-02.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustee Harney, second by Trustee Schaefer. Any discussion, there was no changes really over the last few months on this. All right, roll call, vote, please, Clerk Shepherd.
Trustee Schaefer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Trustee Romano?
Yes.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee, Supervisor Pearl?
Yes, thank you. All right, we'll now move to new business. I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Agenda. This is something that all townships do on the second Tuesday of the month. And so, a motion in a second and then we'll discuss.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Trustee Romano in a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Aaron's. So the agenda, we have to publish it, I have to publish it in the newspaper, we do have to approve it and post it within 15 days. It's scheduled for April 8th at 7:00 PM. And this is a meeting that I don't run, it's our clerk show and we hand it over to a moderator and kind of share what we've been doing and what our plans are for the future. The only thing I may want to add, and this will be up to the board, is that the township officials of Illinois have asked townships if they would like to create a resolution to put that meeting for approval, which is opposing township consolidation into county government. So there's a copy of that resolution, so I didn't, I just wanted to kind of get your thoughts on that before I can add it in and we can vote on that with that, with the amendment in there. But just wanted to get your thoughts. Again, this is something, I know our attorney's actually been talking with all the different townships, TOI, I think, and MTA as well, about what this looks like. Obviously, we are a township that has a mental health board, we have cemeteries, we have open space, a lot of townships don't even have those. So ours would be, it would be a bit of a challenge. I don't even know if King County would want to take over all the townships in King County, but
We're busy.
I know, I think. And so just wanted to get your thoughts on that. And again, this is an initiative that's in the governor's budget. We have a lot of units of government here in Illinois, probably more than any other state. So, I understand where it's coming from, but obviously, the unique nature of what we do and that we feel we can do it best and most efficiently. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on, do we want to put that resolution in the annual town meeting? If not, that's okay too. Trustee Schaefer, we'll start with you.
It's a tough one.
Okay.
I think the challenge is, is if you look at how much township expenses are for your tax bill, it's usually less than 3% of your tax bill. And what they have proposed is that you have to have a 10% savings of that 3%. So, you know, if you calculate it out, it's very low amount that you'd be saving because all of those services still need to be provided. You still have to have the roads plowed, the cemetery has to be taken care of, your general assistance, one of the villages, they have to manage that. So, uh, open space, you've got a thousand acres that somebody would have to take care of, which would probably be used forest preserve. And, um, you know, my biggest concern is the road district up towards, um, in this area, it depends on where those trucks are coming from, early in the morning, if you're an unincorporated area, going from city to city, it would sort of be challenging, probably manageable, but, um, don't know if everybody would get to work on time. And then mental health, I mean, and I haven't heard anything about libraries, because that's another area that we've put out, and, you know, the park district, that's a township function also, but, um, I don't know that those have been addressed in any way, shape, or form. So the cost savings itself and the services that you get now seem to be provided well, at least in our area. I mean, the roads tend to be very, very good. If you do that, I don't know that we would get the same service, but I, I would support having this at least on a
Okay, and if we didn't do it
Discussion.
Yeah, and if we didn't do it during the annual town meeting, we can certainly do it at the May meeting, so, or future meeting.
Well, I think it's an information, and I think the township president should know about.
Okay, very good. It'd be a good time to do it then, yes. Trustee Harney, thoughts?
I think we should put it on the agenda
Okay.
for the annual town meeting.
Sure.
A lot of the things that Ken said, um, I always imagine assault trucks being dispatched from Geneva.
Yeah.
Which I think, and, and what will happen, I think, if this goes through, is all the things the township does now, like the garage up here and all this stuff, will just be here, and it'll be done through the county.
Right.
And then you have another layer of administration. I don't think there'll be any, any, uh, any, uh, uh, significant amount of savings.
You still have to have people to do the plowing.
Exactly.
You may have a little overhead savings, but not much.
You know, and, and I think when I hear these discussions about cutting governments, I think it should be based around which services don't we want.
Right.
And, because that's what this is about, it's about cutting services.